I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We'll start our workshop Thursday, June 8, 2017. And we open with a...
Mr. Mayor?
How's my brain?
Prior to starting with the agenda, I'm wondering if we could add one item to the agenda. Under council items, it would be 5C. And it would be discussion of the memo from Joe Glaze in regards to the costs associated with the culvert replacements.
Anything else from the council? So we open a public comment session. Only once. Only twice. Anybody that want to public comment on the SWIP?
Mr. Mayor, this will be in the council agenda. It's on here, so in case anybody who was new to it, Dan, I mean, I just wish Shane had any updates for us that he didn't know about.
No really updates, just kind of business as usual. We're in the fourth year of a five-year permit, so nothing has really changed in the past four years. This is a requirement of our permit with the state, and it just requires that we annually, we at least hold one public meeting and give the public an opportunity to comment on our stormwater program. So that's really what's on the agenda for Tuesday night. You know, I've been to a lot of these meetings, I've never once had somebody come and say, you know, "I'm really interested in this, and I have some comments."
All right. Anybody else? Councilman Bryan, anything? Did you educate yourself with the SWIP there?
Kind of threw it.
No questions at this point?
Not right now, no.
All right. We'll move on then, planning and zoning. The name is Mary Obrich. Looking for a variance to rebuild their home, 104-foot setback opposed to 102. Council, any questions on that? All right, well, I assume that one's a good to go. And again, this is the opportunity, if we have questions, get them out here, and then we'll vote on Tuesday. And I'm assuming if people don't have questions, they have enough information to know how to vote on Tuesday. I have a meeting, two conditional use permit requests, Grant Rodmacher, expansion of Bill's superact, and deviation from the five-foot setback on the north of the county.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I know there was a lot of questions at planning and zoning regarding the trees and the county's response to the roads, and I was just curious if we heard anything or had any updates on that.
Nothing yet from the county. We do now have Shane's review, which you probably have read, and there are still some outstanding issues in that regard. You're right, I believe the tree removal and replacement was a big issue, and then just generally not having that county response back yet. There were questions about grading and turning radius, and we also talked about specifying very specifically the things that the council wishes to accept from the list of CUP requirements. So as I stated at the planning and zoning meeting, what happens is when there's an existing development like Bill's and the city changes its ordinances, we assume that Bill's has a CUP, as is now required of all motor fuel facilities. So when he came in to amend or to change, you know, to add the pumps, rather, what we're doing is amending that CUP for the fuel sales. And then the second CUP is for the parking setback. It does show three feet on the park end for setback, and then it's intended that that curb just blend with the existing curb behind the building.
Also have a couple of comments from commission members, chose to write in on official comments after the meeting. One of the concerns at the planning and zoning meeting was the fact that we didn't have any equipment, which we still don't. We haven't given the engineer enough time to get a report back to us, which we now have, but the commission has not seen, and we didn't have a landscape plan in time. We also didn't know until the engineer's report here, that the drainage we have is simply a drain tunnel. We thought that was more of a sewer. And I think that was one of the concerns that the commissioners were expressing, that they were having difficulty with it, was we didn't know what we didn't know. Until they knew that, they were not all supportive of sending recommendations to the council. They did send a recommendation with the understanding we'd have to see what the engineer's report came back and what the county was going to recommend. I think there are some open issues that I would like to hear both from Shane and Liz on regarding the cost to moving driveways, if the county comes back and says that needs to be done. The grading issue that was brought up by the engineer here, and certainly the drainage, since we don't really absolutely... If you look at the manhole rates on top there, and they look pretty significant until you open them up, you see what's in there. I don't know which of you wants to go first and speak to that, but I think the concerns of the commission need to be recognized here, too.
Mr. Mayor, I can go first, all right. I think I'll talk about the drainage first, because it's probably the least complicated of the two issues. So, you know, this picture is a picture of the drainage system, and it's kind of a plastic or PVC manhole, and it appears to just have an open bottom, and the pipe's kind of at the top. So I think this whole low area, that's kind of shaded and blue in your report, kind of acts a little bit as an infiltration area. When it gets high enough, the drain tile pipe will convey the stormwater to the county system here. But, so, one of my concerns is that with the proposed entrance road, the proposed grading would fill some of that low area and essentially would push some of that water, or additional water, onto the park property. So we asked for stormwater calculations, and that's something that, you know, I'm pretty confident the applicant and his engineer could work through. It's something that we do almost with every commercial site plan, you know, there's always kind of an initial submittal and address comments. But I do think that there will have to be some work, probably tipping that driveway, you know, internally instead of towards the park, and managing the stormwater on-site. This storm system just isn't big enough to really take any additional stormwater. I don't know exactly where the drainage divides are in the parking lot, we probably need a little bit more information to figure it out, but I also provided an exhibit, and there's quite a bit of the ball fields that drains that direction. The larger area is just under seven acres, but there's probably an acre or two that goes to another catch basin kind of midway in the parking lot. So it's a fairly sizable drainage area, and if we reduce that ponding volume, there could be additional water ponded on the city property. So that's a comment. Again, it just, I just sent out that review memo a couple days ago, and so his engineer just, I'm sure, hasn't had time to address it yet. To me, the larger item, the one that really makes it harder to move forward, is the county's review. Until we know if they have, you know, what their comments might be, it makes it really hard for us to move forward. We could discuss a lot of, you know, the cost of removing an access and maybe realigning it, as was kind of shown on the site plans, but until we know if that's going to be required, you know, it just, it seems like it's a, we're discussing a what-if.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm sure Grant remembers it, and we had a meeting years ago back
when Bill's first built, but that's, you know, back then, that was a discussion that that driveway come out on a common property line there, and the two would be combined into one, the city access, and the access for that lot would become one. So, and that's gonna, I'm sure that's gonna be one of the county requirements. One of the other comments is gonna be writing out a site triangle with all them trees coming out where the new access is gonna be. You're gonna want that correct to the fullest extent possible. So they're not gonna want, now, if them trees go, they're not gonna wanna, they can't enforce it, but they're not gonna recommend, and they don't want a lot of trees planted back in there to block that site triangle. So, the only thing that I'm not sure is whether or not they may want to write turn lane built for that access, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, I mean, there's, I was just looking just at the window, out the window when I got here, there's a pretty wide shoulder already on the, you know, on five, so I don't know if there'd be a whole lot of grading work or anything like that necessary to construct a turn lane, but...
The drainage structures and stuff, you got some at the road, and you got them in that little ditch, and if you, that two feet could, I don't know how, all that will work out. That's, you have to be done through the design and have to make it work, I guess, but...
Sure. All right. You know, overall, I think my first comment of my review memo was that kind of this entrance is conducive to the overall frontage road plan for the development, and like council member Bettinger stated, you know, that was kind of the plan going back, you know, probably 12, 13 years ago now, for that private frontage road system.
Questions from the council? I do think your last line there is the, I think discussion points are tough without that information. With the, I think the council member Bettinger's point, the drainage running out to the county runs to that drainage pond 152 up on Andy Walden's property there. It looks like there's a 15-inch line there, I mean, adjacent to our parking lot? Is that what that indicates?
Yeah, I believe it's 12-inch stubbed out from the manhole, from the county manholes, and then from there, it's, in the first drainage structure, it goes to a six- or eight-inch drainage tile. The county map actually shows eight-inch, it looked more like six-inch to me, but...
But the brown line running up Nellin Boulevard, is that 15-inch?
Uh, yes, so looking at the map, and this is a map provided by the county, Mr. Mayor, it was actually provided several years ago, but that shows that it's 15-inch. I don't think anything has changed since then.
I recognize the landscape is significantly different.
Right.
And the rest of it is still there. Other questions on that?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
With, with the outstanding issues, are we gonna have enough, are we gonna have those answered back by Tuesday?
There's no guarantee, but the county will get to it when they get to it. And I think Liz has been calling on a regular basis.
Email.
And you've contacted the county?
I have not.
Well, we did, I did ask Chalmers Pearson, the local government officials' meeting, if he could look into it and see if we could get, told them when our meeting was tonight, and we had to have information to the engineer and to the planner and to the council. And the only email I got back was, he's looking into it. So I can't tell you if I have the information, so. I don't know, that was, like I said, the concern when we got here. Two comments from the commissioners. One was specifically, Commissioner Cleef had said this at the meeting, he didn't feel there was enough information on those three areas, specifically the county, the engineer, and the trees is a, you know, significantly different issue. If there's gonna be a driveway of any sorts, you have to have clear bits of building. And Mr. Rodmacher's already said, he's not planning on planting any trees back on his site, so I don't think that's an issue there. We talked about at the commission meeting that since it's not adjacent to a residential area, there isn't going to be the same screening considerations there that there would be if it was residential here instead of a park. So I don't think that's an issue. There was a question as to replacing trees that would be taken down from city property somewhere else on city property, not in the view of the site lines of the driveway. And Mr. Rodmacher indicated at the commission meeting that that would be no problem. Designate how many and what type, and he would take care of that. But that specifically hadn't been decided yet either. I do think, you know, one of the comments that came up afterwards, and we stumbled a little bit at that meeting, as to the fact we were in a public hearing, and some of the information didn't get out, the information didn't get out to commission members until Friday night, on the morning they reed, and so they didn't feel prepared, and then the documents were not in color, and they were not enlarged, like we're seeing here, so they were looking a lot of black on black. So there was some question as to what they were looking at, so. I think that's Mr. Wagner's concern there, nuance. He would like to see the trees protected. I don't think the city has any, again, with this not being up against residential area, any reasonable expectation that Mr. Rodmacher would be planting trees on his property. And trees on our property need to be, make certain that that road is a free sightline on both sides.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rick.
I do agree with that, but if, you know, based on the picture here, if you take that whole string of trees out, it wouldn't, just like everywhere else, we do have some in between the park and that. It would be nice to have some in there, you know, obviously, depending on what is required for sightlines and the proper sightlines, but if you take the whole strip out, it'd be nice to have.
And I walked up the other night, and I think reasonably back from the parking lot, you have the whole width of the parking lot that would be good sightlines, and at certain points, you run into the building here, a sightline, but from there back, like the evergreens that are behind the building right now, I think there's a reasonable space to protect the park from the commercial area. And as indicated on that, Mr. Rodmacher said that is a reasonable expectation as well, that there'd be a certain number of trees to be replaced, that the city would have to determine what that is, what type and size. But again, I didn't come with the recommendation, because we had, we didn't know at the time which trees were actually on East Top, the property lines and park. You can sight down from where the fence is, but I don't know where you're sighting them this time here, so I couldn't tell you. I think there's probably fewer on the city's property than we think.
Mr. Mayor, there, just for the record, there are 14 on the city property.
Okay.
And I believe, I thought the way we left it at planning and zoning was to replace one to one.
That was, that was their recommendation, we just didn't know what the number was.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Like I say, when I, when I looked at it, it was hard to tell, because I didn't, I didn't know where the lot line lay exactly.
The black.
Again, the images we saw, we couldn't see the lines. Other questions? Liz, did you have anything else to add on that?
Oh, I do know.
So I think that the big thing at this point, you know, obviously, we have Shane's report now with the county, because if we're going to have to change driveways, we have to have that discussion, where and how and what the cost is there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rick?
There's, I guess from my perspective, there is, there's two outstanding issues, drainage and then the access.
And those we have to have answered before we can vote.
All right? Anything else? Well, at this point, for Mr. Rodmacher's sake, it sounds like, without those answers, the council will be, will be needing to wait for those answers, and likely to be tabled at that point. Okay? Anything else on that one?
Mr. Mayor? Just, I will, we issued them a 60-day letter extending that review period, if we tabled the project.
The second conditional use permit, the deviation from the setback, is there any additional discussion? Obviously, the curbing, the grading has to do with that. Shane Uhl said potentially continuing that retaining wall, and so that the drainage did go south rather than north, continuing at the property line if the, from where it is right now, behind the store all the way out to Nellin Boulevard, the setback.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Currently, the plan shows, you know, these black contours, so it shows some grading on city property. The elevation of the entrance road is about three feet higher than the existing ground, so it won't be a real steep bank or anything very appruso, but I did write in my review memo that, you know, that the city council, you have jurisdiction over that park property, that the applicant would have to obtain your permission specifically to grade on city property. So if, if the grading is okay as shown, I don't think there's anything else needed. I believe with the original store, there is that retaining wall, you know, that's maybe a little bit different situation, because there's also the ball field fence right at that location, but for that scenario, my recollection is that he was not allowed to grade on the city property, or maybe just chose to construct a retaining wall to avoid that altogether. So that would be an option here, would be, you know, roughly a three-foot-high retaining wall if that wanted to continue, and then that would, you know, the applicant would still be able to continue with his project with, you know, a little bit added expense, but really, it's the, in my view, the city is the owner of the park property, you're the owner of the trees. So to remove those trees and grade on property, he simply needs the council's permission. If the council's not willing to grant that permission, then you'd have to revise the plans to not, not grade or remove those trees.
All right. Questions regarding setback?
I guess I'd like to know if he does grade on city property, will our drainage handle it? If not, then we have to look at different options. But I guess that's the big question, if he does do the grading on the city property, moving that water containment area, making it smaller, will our drainage, I don't think the drainage structures or system there will handle it. So then, at that point, you'd have to upgrade the drainage system or do something else.
Yeah, and I think, you know, for the interim, I think that he could handle it fairly easily just by shutting the water internally to a site. I mean, there's already kind of a green space that he's proposing here, and just a little lower ponding area would very easily accommodate this, this, this site plan. My understanding is that in the future, he maybe has plans to do something else on this corner with a, you know, a building possibly, and at that point, maybe, you know, they could look at something more permanent. But likely, you know, definitely, some kind of stormwater improvements on this property will be necessary. I believe my, my, I haven't seen a county review letter yet either, but since this system is connected to the county's storm drainage system, my expectation is that they're also gonna have comments on, we want to review the stormwater calculations. That's happened in 100% of other similar situations where drainage is going to a county system. So I think those are gonna be necessary regardless, those calculations. And generally, the county's requirement is that, you know, they will take as much stormwater as going, which is going there now, but will not allow an increase, so.
Did you, you indicate that when Greenberg's took down the house on the corner there and made it into a display lot, that you did not find any calculations on the stormwater drainage then, or runoff?
Yeah, that is correct. I don't have any files from, appears that it happened around 2006, 2008, and...
And I just want to clarify, we don't know that they don't exist, we just don't know where they are for you.
Correct. I don't have any, any files in my office.
Any other questions on the setback?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
Should we, in our discussions or contacts with the county, explain that because we have not had a response from them yet, we've now had to extend our CUP request, and if we can't extend it again? So we really truly do need their input, so both the property owner can go forward with what's going to be required of them, and council can make final decisions.
We certainly can communicate that, I'm not sure it moves the county much, but...
Well, we've at least voiced our put...
The response I got the other, the other night, and then the email follow-up was, we'll get it when we get it. And I would believe that they are very busy. It's a big county, and this is a small project, based on what we've heard the county's working on right now, but it's important to us, and it's important to the business owners, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
I think it's important, too, that we have the decisions so that going forward with the project, it's done correctly.
Absolutely. Yeah, you know what, you don't want to have to redo anything at this point.
Right. Or nor would we be able to go back and ask them to do something once we get their input, so.
All right. Other comments? So who will the county be sending their information to?
Probably both of them.
Planner, the engineer, or the city, or...
Well, I know they've got my email for sure, and they know that you represent the city as well. I'm guessing they'd send it to both.
They generally send it to the office.
All right. Well, that's gonna be the key thing, one of the key things here, so. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I'm just trying to think if there's a way to do a Plan A or Plan B that...
It's Thursday, and we all work. If the county doesn't show up right away, it's a tough, you know, I think, I think it's gonna be tough, because we're gonna have questions about whatever they give us, and there's gonna be cost considerations, you know, both for the property owner and for the city, so. And without that county information, it's pretty tough to... And the reason for this workshop is to try and find out if we have enough information now to make decisions one way or the other on Tuesday. I think trying to scramble a whole bunch in between is probably not practical, but I think trying to scramble a whole bunch in between that is probably not practical, but if the county shows up with a thorough report tomorrow and it's got costs and everything else in it, they've talked about drainage and access, we certainly can consider it. I think the way to do that would be to bring that information and have the longer discussion on Tuesday, which we try and have the longer discussion here and the vote on Tuesday, but if it's appropriate, we certainly can bring it up, it's on the agenda. All right, item C. City code amendment. Can you schedule? Page, the bottom page four and on page five, one of the questions that came up at the Planning and Zoning Committee, our commission. There wasn't clarity prior to this, it just said anybody 62 or older got free rental in the city hall. And we realized that could be anybody in the county, anybody in the state. It wasn't, didn't define that they were residents that got that. And not that this is high demand for weddings and other things, it is, it is used quite a bit, and so. Clarification on item 24A, page four, City Hall. Resident younger than 62, it's $50. City Hall non-resident is $150. Item F, there would be no rental charge for senior citizens, 62 or older funerals, governmental groups or independent nonprofit groups. I think not associated with the city, I think the intention was, if I recall right, we wanted it to be groups that were within the city rather than any, any group could rent it if you were 62. Or a nonprofit. So we wanted it to indicate that they're nonprofits like the Lions that aren't part of the city government, but they operate within the city. So I think that still needs some clarification, it's nonprofit groups that are, are active within the city but are not part of the city government. So I think that was the clarification they were looking for there. And then the other one was the, there wasn't a designation before and they parked concession stand for non-residents. And so they added non-residents at $50, otherwise it was as presented to them, those are the three, three items.
I just have one clarification on F.
Yes.
When you're talking about governmental groups, we do have governmental groups that are not in the city. Like when we do the census, they come and use our facility. The caucus, they come and use our facility.
Are they typically paid?
Yes, I think on those ones. The, no, the caucus, or the caucus does, now I have to check that one out. But the census doesn't, because that's part of our overall census of our community, so we don't charge them for that.
I think that was the understanding, if the county came out here and had a meeting, we would charge them typically?
Right, no, we didn't.
And, and so we were saying that if it's a political group, that's not a government group. So a caucus is a political group as opposed to government. Where the census is being done on behalf of the government, so that was the distinction, we need to clarify that. But political groups would still be charged, but if it's actually a government agency, state or county or federal that wanted to come in here and have a meeting in our building, we wouldn't charge them.
Right, I mean, I disagree with that, because I think it's great if the county comes around and.
Well, again, that was just the, the revision of what was there, because that's what it said. The only distinction was, you know, again, the, anybody that's having a funeral, they didn't distinguish between residents and non-residents, and it already had the governmental agencies in there. And we just distinguished a political party was not a government agency. The councils, certainly we can redress that, say if the county wants to use the building, they can pay a fee for it, or the state. So, but what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ray.
I, I would prefer though, if it's a governmental group, that they not be charged. I know we've used the county building, they've been very gracious hosts and not have charged us to use that. And I think that that it is appropriate that we would do the same. I don't know how many meetings they have in a year.
The county or?
Yeah, the county or the caucus, or it's not the caucus or the census.
Yeah, the county came around one time, the caucus, that's only once every two years.
Right, but that, that would pay, because that's a, that's not the government doing that, it's not a governmental.
Yeah, and then the census, that's going to, they already started calling about some possible dates. So I don't recall how many times, because it's every 10 years, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would think that they should be included and they're no charge. I think we probably lose more money based on the fact that we don't charge anybody 62 or over. I mean, it would be interesting to track for a year to see how many free rentals there are. And if we find we're giving away the store, maybe look at that again later. I think the number of governmental meetings that are held here are probably far less than anybody in a group that's got somebody that's 62 or over.
One thing, we didn't have any information at the planning zoning was how many meetings are actually held here, how many are paid, non-paid, what types of meetings? Because again, we, we've operated as we have since we were township, it's funerals. We wanted to make sure that the seniors organization had a place to meet that wasn't being charged. But we don't know how many meetings are held here, what kind of rental we're getting off of this, and how many meetings aren't being charged. We did think that if you can't find somebody 62 or older to rent the building for free or to reserve the building for free, you don't know enough people. So again, if there's something we want to do for this and then revisit that, or if we want to hold off this decision until we have some stats, I, again, I don't know how much revenue we're making on the building.
We don't rent it out as much as you think. I mean, it's generally rented, well, not even rented, but for the Lions, for the heritage, for us. The church is the primary one, they do it every Sunday, and then on occasion, we'll get a little party here and there. I wouldn't even say once a month, to rent it out to somebody else. So it's really not, it's our parks that are the big money maker, not.
Yeah, I would say maybe do one to two funerals.
Yeah, maybe a year.
And there probably is mostly, other than the ones you mentioned, birthday parties or showers.
Yeah, and that's not bad.
And you'll see that maybe every other month. Any other discussion on that one? I do think we need to clean up the independent nonprofit groups not part of city government, is that a better way to say that?
I think that's probably better, like you said it before, active within the city but not part of city government.
Yes. Anything else on the fees? All right, item D. Radamacher-Rasler Comp Plan Amendment and Rezoning Information of Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, give just a little background, if you don't mind?
That would be fine.
So started out as 28-acre piece owned by Mr. Rasler with Mr. Radamacher wishing to purchase 10 acres to construct the gas station and liquor store. So the comprehensive plan amendment was more or less submitted by Mr. Radamacher. Asking for changing permanent rural residential to commercial and light manufacturing as far as land use. And then the rezoning would be the RRA to the C1 or I1, commercial or industrial. So we were moving forward with the premise that he would request this for this 10-acre piece and ask the city to consider the regional or district changes as part of the 2040 comp plan update. And then just this week, I received a call from Mr. Rasler who got a copy of this June 5th memo from me. And he had a little sketch plan for the 80 acres just north of this current piece. And his indication was that he, you know, he didn't want to interfere with Mr. Radamacher's request. But we talked a little bit about spot zoning and how possibly the addition of another parcel or two would be beneficial if in fact the city were in favor of this area as a business park. So having said that, one option, since I have not noticed the newspaper yet, it has to be in tomorrow. One option would be to submit an amended application if Mr. Radamacher were okay with it to include the larger area. And then notice the paper for those parcels instead of just the single parcel. So that is an option. But in general, the intent is to spur development in this southwest area of the city and take advantage of that growth in Elk River right over the border and the traffic down 181st. So just remembering that when we're considering a comp plan amendment or rezoning, the most critical thing is the consideration of locating or changing, having uses like other uses or compatible with their neighboring use. So I feel that the neighborhood gas station can be appropriate in this location if we are considering the bigger picture. And certainly the details come later with the subdivision of the land and the development of the parcel. So having said that, I'll field any questions that you have.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ray.
To Honors Dodgman, tell me again how many acres Mr. Rasler would like to now include into this?
Well, he owns an additional 80 north of the 28-acre piece that we're currently considering. Part of it is encumbered by the, not only wetland, but by the power line, easily.
And he's asking to do what with that 80 acres?
Well, yeah, what you've got in front of you there is that concept, so he would, on the north end, just write that one. On the north end, consider about, you know, nine or 10 lots as a continuation of that current neighborhood. And then create a buffer between that and the commercial or industrial south of it. And basically, the triangle south of the power line is pretty much wet, I believe.
Miss Dodgman?
Mm-hmm.
Would that, 80 acres though, would that go into this commercial or is that, would that stay residential?
Well, there would potentially be, yeah, that would, if it's residential intended, then yeah, we'd leave that part residential, right.
So how much of the 80 would not be residential? Would it, would it all still stay residential and stay?
I guess I don't have an exact number. Looks to be about two-thirds of that 40-acre piece. So, I don't know, 25 to the other, the other 40 on the far west would remain as is if it's not usable, you know, developable, it looks pretty wet, I'm guessing. And then the other piece, we'd have to kind of figure that out. I'm not sure. His indication in his email, just, you know, kind of a, kind of a initial thought was that he would process this as a PUD, sort of a mixed use. But I don't believe that's going to work under the city's PUD ordinance because of the requirement that when, when you created the ordinance, it was for more or less that Morton Farm Preserve. And it references the Natural Communities and Rare Species map that Anoka County has. And that oak forest up in Morton Farm was part of that. And that 40 acres was preserved, and then, you know, the clustering was allowed on the other 40. So without an area like that, I'm not sure, unless the city wants to change the ordinance to allow a mixed use, we may have to go with the standard RRA zoning there.
And that then would have to adhere to the existing density.
So I'm, yeah, I'm wondering if it might not take up that whole northerly 40 because of the size requirement for those lots, but, well, it hasn't been discussed in detail though, at this point.
Okay, so since we're, this is on our agenda as a discussion, I have only, I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. Rasler. Looks like he'd like to speak.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, members of the council.
Can I hold you a second then, I'd also like to hear if you would like to speak, Mr. Radamacher? Because you're initiating this, and so if we're going forward with the comp plan amendment, it sounds like you're the initiator and you're partnering with that to expand it beyond the 10 acres.
And any other questions in the audience?
I would object, if it works for us, it works for both parties.
So Mr. Rasler, if you'd like to speak to what we see in front of us here?
Yeah, just to give a little clarity, I contacted Liz and my question was, because I know all these spot zonings go, sometimes it's tougher to do. I just wanted to show you what our intentions were of moving forward, of what the concept that I'd probably come forward with and present, although it's not in its true form rated this time. And the first thing is, is that I don't want it to impede Grant's proposal. And I don't want to tag it on to Grant's proposal if it become a hindrance to his approval. I think we need to march forward with his wishes and we could address this at a later date. But I also wanted to give the opportunity to the city that if you felt that it was better to tag it on at the same time and maybe an easier approval process, that this would be an opportunity. So this doesn't necessarily have to come in at this exact same time. We could just move forward with Grant's original application on the 10 acres. I just wanted to give you some idea of what I was thinking, and we're not ready to march forward with the rate at this, this second. But I think that the comp plan could be amended at this second. And we're in favor of possibly amending it to accommodate a type of a business park based on approvals into the future. So that's where we're coming from, we're not asking that it be attached to Grant's. We're just giving you the option that this is something that I think would be pretty good for the city. We put a little residential to the north, because you need a little bit of buffer there. Those people probably won't like the concept if there isn't residential up to there. And we're way short, we don't have any residential here in town for any of the kids to build it. And, you know, there's three lots on the market right now, so this community needs residential really, really bad. And then the business park under those power lines and so forth, we can't build houses under those. And so it makes sense. And I'd work with Liz. And I'd work with Liz and so forth to kind of clean it up and get back with a proposal. But it's a pretty good concept. And we work with Anoka County to get the access and so forth into there. And this is something that we'd probably be marching forward with in the next year or so on this concept. So that's the only thing that I was trying to do there. And I don't mean to, you know, put something on Grant. And I don't want to slow his process down at all. I don't think we should do that. I think we should march forward with this process. So it's your decision. Okay?
Okay. Is anybody else in the audience want to speak to this?
I do have a lot of questions, so I'm...
Okay, could you step up here and introduce yourself and give us your address, please?
Yes, so Melissa Stover. So I'm at 9349 181st. So I would be the adjacent property to the 10-acre proposal. So I just kind of wanted to hear, I know this has been kind of an up in the air concept. From my understanding, what we've been told is there would be two access points to this commercial property. And one would be, or we've been reached out to for the access up on 181st, whether it would be shared on the property line or solely on this 10-acre line. And then with that, it would be the county's requirements if it was a public or a private access, on whether there would have to be a turn lane. Unfortunately, I didn't come prepared with any kind of aerials, but if you can see from my property, we're already very close to the road. We are under the 120 feet from the center line. My understanding from where the access would be on the property lines, that a bypass lane or an acceleration lane would have to come into our property there about 15 feet, which we're already, I don't know the exact, but I know where under 100 feet is it is from the center line. So that was kind of mine in the concept plan, wanting to know just kind of the infrastructure that would go around. We're already a very, very busy road coming from that four-way, so how that would kind of impact us being the residential adjacent to this.
You, pardon me, Mr. Mayor?
Planners Stockman.
If I'm not mistaken, you are on that 10-acre piece, correct?
Correct. And we would be...
Right next to where the 10 acres that Mr. Rodamacher is proposing. So in my opinion, and we have the city engineer here also, and he can comment as well, but I'm not certain that we need both of those. I mean, we have the BAW street going north-south. We may not need that road in between your property and his development, in my opinion. But that's yet, you know, to be determined, I think. And then county, or excuse me, Shane could comment more on the requirements for passing lanes and such. But it, I know there was a lot of kind of rumors, I guess.
Yeah, I'll just give a...
It was, yeah, and I'm really glad that you came in because it's, that's the right thing to do, to hear it firsthand. So thank you for that. Shane, I don't know if you have any other thoughts on just general access?
At this time, I really don't have any thoughts. I haven't studied this, you know, the turn lanes, the bypass lanes, those are really going to be determined by the county, not the city.
Does the county require acceleration lanes? They don't have that out here on 22.
No.
Because if we don't have it out here, we probably don't need it anywhere. Yeah, I would suspect if you're putting in a gas station and a liquor store, if you're developing 10 acres, you're going to want access to both BAW and 181st. Other questions at this point? Again, so we've got an option of considering the 10 acres and a comp plan amendment and having to deal with what that means as far as spot zoning and its impact on other development in the city. You might want spot zoning, what our logic would be. Obviously, to avoid being sued, we need to make sure our logic is properly presented in writing. And so that if this is something that we would like to proceed with, how do we respond to other similar requests? And if not, I think we owe it to the property owner and the intended purchaser to explain thoroughly why we wouldn't as well. And then secondarily, the additional acreage there as far as some other development, commercial residential, or commercial industrial, and some combination of buffer residential. And whether it's appropriate at this time or to make it part of our comp plan update that we're in the process of working on this year.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Benjamin. I think that Liz should work with both parties and let them decide whether they want to move forward with both pieces of land or just the 10 acres. And there probably wouldn't be that much of a cost there for someone to imagine if they move forward with two compared to one.
That's correct.
So it might be advisable, maybe it'd be quicker to do them both at the same time. And then you're really not spot zoning them either. It's going to be more than one parcel, so. So if you're both agreed to it and wanted to move forward, I would think that'd be, together, I think that would be the best way to go forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Planners Stockman.
Just one other comment is, the other thing to consider, even though we don't have the direct involvement of, on our application, I mean, of Ms. Stover and the other 40-acre Stover piece, the city could consider the four 40s as a district or, you know, business park region, so to speak. So that sort of in, you know, could be kept in the back of our minds. In other words, I don't know if it makes a lot of sense to go from residential on the east, you jump to business, and then you go back to residential on the west. So it may make more sense to push business all the way to the city border. And especially given the large area of wetland that we have, we may want to open up, you know, that area. It's something to think about at least, and...
What does that do for taxes?
Well, attracting businesses is always increasing...
No, I'm talking about for the Stovers.
Oh, I believe, well, the land's more valuable as that, under that zoning classification.
If the land's more valuable, their taxes go up and they...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Benjamin.
You're still taxed based on use. So as long as the farmer is still ag, and they're taxed as ag, it's not taxed as commercial.
That's right. He's right.
Ms. Stover?
So our ag tax was taken, that was changed two or three years ago because we don't have livestock. We only farm sod. So we actually, I know my parcel is commercial, industrial, public utility is how Anoka County sees us. So our taxes have already gone up even though we're zoned residential because we have a cell phone tower and then we have commercial trucks stored on the property. So in my father-in-law's parcel, because there's no livestock, this was a big thing a couple of years ago where they took agricultural taxing away from us. You know, longer grandfathered in because we did not have livestock.
So you're just residential at this point? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Zoning does not matter. The tax is based on us.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Brian.
Question for Planners Stockman. Do you see if we added this 80 acres of industrial, that is there benefits to that now where businesses could, would take it? Do you see businesses taking advantage of that different location from what we currently have as zoned for businesses?
Um, yeah, I don't think it's necessarily a, you know, a bad decision or anything. That's what you're asking. But I do, that's my number one request is for commercial industrial zoned land. Do we have lots available?
So thoughts as far as to Mr. Rodamacher, Mr. Raesler? Same direction, but input? Councilman Brian.
I think one thing to consider regardless of which situation either plan gets put together is that we do look at entrances, that they're far enough from the intersection, that if down the road, there is a signal that we don't necessarily, that it's less of an issue as far as, you know, needing medians, et cetera, that if they're, as we've seen in Oak Grove, if the entrances are far enough away from the intersection, having, setting up medians at signals isn't a necessity.
I guess my question to the council is, what are your thoughts regarding 10 acres going right now and looking at the additional acreage in the immediate future? If Rodamacher, if it passes here, can proceed? And what impact do you think this will have on the immediate neighbors? And then the residents in general, if we do what appears to be spot zoned for 10 acres or add an additional industrial, commercial area with a residential buffer, not contiguous? Because obviously, that's what we have to change. Our ordinance requires contiguous to existing commercial. So what would you like to see so they can know how to proceed? Do you think this is a good spot for this type of development? And is it time to change our ordinance so that we can, without opening everything pell mell to commercial development, provide some additional lots, both residential and commercial in our community?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Brian.
I do see, you know, there's that, that south end of the city, that's the main route to get west to Elk River. So there's certainly potential for, you know, as traffic does seem to be increasing down in that way, that, you know, it is certainly a definite possibility for a good use for that spot.
10 acres or 110 acres?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rayburn.
I'd like to ask Ms. Stover, how do you feel about this going in? You addressed the driveway issue, but how do you feel about that going in next to you?
I think at the time, from what I understand of the concept, the actual gas station development, commercial rezoning, I don't think we have a real thought either way. We're kind of waiting for the final there. I think my biggest concern is the traffic and kind of the impact to that area. Basically, my biggest concern was if there's going to be access of 181st, whether that was going to be a private access. I think this has been presented that one way. Or it was going to be a, sorry, a private road or a public road. And if it was a private road, we've been presented an option to buy into that in the event we ever wanted to sell and develop commercially. So I kind of wanted to know the difference there because I think that'll change some opinions. But if it was required to have like signaling, I think was a thing where we've heard that there would have to be medians, that we would have to have acceleration lanes. My biggest, if you can look at the map or see where we are, is, I mean, the traffic is nonstop. We a lot of times have, Anoka County, Sheriff is sitting down there waiting for, I mean, the speeding all day till hours of the morning. And we don't have anything even drawing them to there. So having a gas station, I guess that's where too, if it's going to be like a 24-hour truck station, is it going to be closing at 10:00 PM? Like what's the, what's the operation? So I guess our biggest concern at this point is how it would affect past their parcel or not our parcel as far as the road. That, that I would probably be more against because I'm already, like I said, I know we're less than 100 feet from the center line from the last time the road was widened. And my understanding from one of the concepts was that it was going to come an additional 15 feet onto our property. So that I would be against.
Mr. Mayor?
Planners Stockman.
I would like to just respond to her question about hours. Our ordinance limits closing time to 11:00 PM, the way Mr. Rodamacher currently operates this bill's up here. As far as I know, he might keep those same hours. If, if the council were to allow any expanded hours, that would be addressed, you know, at the meetings and your whole neighborhood would all receive letters. That upcoming hearing will be the 4th Tuesday in June. So look for that letter and, and we can move forward from there. But some of the design details don't come until later. This is just the consideration for changing the land use designation.
The pumps do operate 24 hours.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
The building's closed.
The door is closed, right.
Mr. Raesler?
Yeah, I actually spoke to Jamie, her husband, about this concept and so forth. The only reason why on my deal that the public goes in there is that Jamie wanted that as a benefit. If he doesn't, I don't really see a need for that road to butt her property and Rodamacher's property. It serves really just for Rodamacher, really. And bills, it would be essential to have an access on 181st. He won't do this deal if he doesn't have an access on 181st. He has to have an access out there. So I think this is a real opportunity for this community that these guys are even interested in building down there. And I think it'd be a commercial asset that would be second to none. Somebody's going to do this deal. And where they're going to do it is they're going to move down to 181st in Cleveland. Now, right up Cleveland, next to south of the Twin Lake School, is our development. We've got 250 homes going in there. Right now, it's fully in their construction. There's a lot of builders in there building. So there's a pool of people that are going to be out of that community. And if we don't do this as a community, the city of Nala, the city of Ramsey will. And they'll do it just on the opposite corner. So I think now is the time to capitalize on that corner. Now's the time to put a commercial business on that corner. And we know what kind of an operator he is and they're second to none. So I think it's a real opportunity for our community. So if it doesn't go here, it'll go down 181st. It'll be in the city built river, and we don't want that. So let's capitalize on that now. Okay? Thanks.
Any other questions at this point? All right. We've got information. We've got something to think about. And it will come before us again very shortly. All right, we've got information, we've got something to think about. And it will come before us again very shortly. Council okay with moving on at this point? You guys have anything else you want to say at this point? I would... Yeah, leave it at that. I do have a question for Mr. Raisler. On exhibit that we were given, Elk River aerial, exhibit D2. There's properties in here, maybe you don't own those. Do you have that exhibit back there?
I wasn't in, I don't think that was in the...
Maybe come up here maybe and...
Yeah, I don't know that you put out there or not.
Okay, I'm looking at these parcels here. Are these your parcels if they're numbered here?
Here's our development, right behind the, just south of the existing that's there. So, and then up in here. And then we own a 40 here in the city of Elk River. And then some of this other stuff we've got tied up in auctions and so forth.
My, my question is, the people in Bailey Estates here.
Yep.
Tend to do a lot of walking.
Yep.
And they are looking to get into Elk River. And right now, they walk down Baugh, 281st.
Oh, yeah.
And they have requested sidewalks.
Okay.
And I'm looking here, I don't know where you sit with this land right here, but we've got a road that dead ends right here.
Yeah, yeah.
That would make sense to get into a residential area here, so people aren't walking on the busy county road. Whether they have sidewalks or not is a whole different thing, but at least they... So again, I don't know, as you're thinking about what you want to be doing here, if you could maybe address how our residents could get over to their desires in Elk River without them going on the county road.
Yeah, that's a good concept.
Mr. Mayor, could I just have one minute to talk to these two gentlemen and try to set up a discussion now?
All right, go on to minor subdivisions. I mean, a lot longer configurations, a lot splits.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bettinger.
All right, it's my opinion, I think we should move forward and change our ordinance to make them so they're done administratively.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rickert.
I agree with that as well, you know, again, you know, what I hear most about is our fees. And if this is an easy way to take care of some of those basic easy things that are done, and reduce those fees, it'd be a good thing for our residents.
Anything else, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
So, okay, do... Do we need to wait till Tuesday to approve Liz looking into this and bringing it to planning and zoning? Or do we just bring it to planning and zoning?
Well, it's got to have a public hearing to change the ordinance.
Right.
And I would have to come through planning and zoning.
Right, but...
So we would, we would at this point, on Tuesday, direct staff Liz to prepare this for public hearing, for planning and zoning. Get the public hearing in and then bring it up to the next council.
Okay.
Correct?
Just one, we're going to be behind a month though, because we're going to miss Friday's. Tomorrow is the deadline for the publication. So we'll take it to planning and zoning as discussion first, and then I'll draft an ordinance for the following. Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else on that one? And we have code enforcement, our lone audience member. Let's put this off till the end of the meeting, okay? So what's, what's happening here with Mr. Elphell?
Well, he's doing what he likes to do. And he purchased what he thought was the perfect spot. And he's got a nice big building now, but his neighbors are not happy. Because of the vehicles coming and going. So I was struggling to, you know, I guess the first inclination is, well, yeah, we consider this a business. So we put him through the IUP process. But I don't know that that, I mean, other than limiting the number of days that he has people coming and going, there's not a lot we can do. You know, he's, he's in, well, we could let him speak too, but, you know, he's indicated 30 to 40-ish, you know, vehicles from these winning bids, he, for items he puts online, then come to pick up. Usually during a window, there's always stragglers. But, you know, they do pull completely onto the property, so, you know, without parking on the street. And they're not all there at once necessarily, but our ordinance does not address anything such as garage sales, which we could apply it in that respect. But it's different, I mean, it's, it's becoming very common for people to do what he does. And I thought it was worthy to bring it to your attention. And just discuss what you, what your feelings are with, related to the traffic issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bettinger.
Really, the, probably best way to proceed would be to get an IUP, I would think. Because then it lays, the neighborhood gets involved, but then it lays out what you can do and can't do. And then it, once you have that, it protects you from any new neighbors or complaints that come in. As long as you obey the conditions that are put on your IUP, you know, you're good, so. I don't know how many neighbors give me PO'd already, but... I mean, it's, it's up to you, but really, I mean, an IUP is, a lot of people think they're being penalized for having to get one, but it's also, on the other hand, it's your own protection. Because it lays out that I have a right to do this, and these are my conditions, as long as I follow them, I can do, do what I want.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Tony Elphell, this is Councilman Bettinger. I don't disagree with what you just said. However, I don't think any resident should be required to do, get an IEP?
IUP.
IUP interim use permit? Unless, unless there's real reasons for doing that. If something is not prohibited by ordinances, a person shouldn't have to ask for special permission to do what's not prohibited. And Ms. Stockman was correct when she described the fact that we found a property that looked like just perfect for us, with the building that would accommodate our online auctions. So, so we purchased that, knowing that there was no regulations in now then prohibiting garage sales, which is what we're doing. We're, we're, instead of having people, a lot of people coming all day long, we have a very small amount of people that come just to pick up their stuff. So it's actually better than, better, less impact on neighbors than a garage sale where there's always people coming and going all day long. So we do have, I, sometimes 40, sometimes 50, sometimes 30, winning bidders. And they come over a period of about eight hours. So very minimal impact of traffic for our selling out of our garage. So I would also question if I, if I have to get an IUP, you know, I'll do that. But I just don't think I should be required to do that when the ordinance, as I said, doesn't prohibit what I'm doing. And if I did have to do that, then wouldn't, wouldn't it be reasonable that everybody who does a garage sale has to get an IUP? There's some people who maybe do one garage sale. And there's some people who do repetitive garage sales all year long, you know, just like me. Except they have a lot more traffic, and they establish the price themselves. Whereas I have much less traffic, and all, all the looking at my product is online. So it has no, no impact on my neighbors whatsoever. And which I'm also kind of surprised that, I don't think I've PO'd any of my neighbors. And I talked to them all when we first acquired the property. I've been renting it since March, and then we closed on it recently. I talked to them all, and nobody expressed any negativity about us doing online auctions. But maybe they were just being polite, they didn't want to confront me, you know, face to face. But that's, that's basically it. The, the garage is way back in the back of the property. You know, people drive way off the road in order to get there. There's, most of the time, we have an eight-hour window to pick up from 11:00 until 7:00 o'clock. So maybe we made five extra cars, an hour average. And we, we don't do a lot of these at all in the winter time. So I suppose if you average the whole year, it's one to two a month in, in the summer, in the spring and fall. We're probably closer to two a month. And I can't even remember a time when we did three a month, but there probably has been a time where we did three a month. So the impact is, what I'm doing is really a less impact than some of, some of the people in now then, that have multiple families come over and do repetitive garage sales, you know, periodically all year, so.
Council, go on to questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bettinger.
I agree with you. Probably don't affect the road a real lot, a lot of traffic. But obviously, somebody has complained, and that's why we're here tonight. So there's probably been one or two complaints already. And I'm just trying to say that if I get an IUP, it protects, if you already have two today.
A big part of it...
If there's already one or two complaints today, you're more likely going to have more in the future. And just by an IUP, you're protected, if you want to continue doing it. But that, that's totally up to you.
Well...
I understand what you're saying, it's not against the rules. And if you want to continue doing the way you are, that's fine, but, and, you know, as more people come out there and more complaints, ordinances and stuff do change. And then all of a sudden, you don't have that protection. Once you have your IUP, but that's, that's totally up to you.
I guess I'm just, really not all that familiar with how to go on getting an IUP. So obviously, I can find out. It's, just kind of rubbed me the wrong way that I would have to do that when other people who do the same thing that I do aren't, aren't being asked to get that. And I'd like to ask who it was that complained and contacted you, Ms. Stockman?
We, yeah, we can't tell you by law, I'm so, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I surmise however...
The statement was whoever contacted the city was representing four property owners.
Okay.
Don't know if they're your neighbors or close neighbors, far neighbors.
Or competitors.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
I would agree with Councilman Bettinger, basically. This seems that vehicles are being purchased and sold as a business, and that having an IUP would be best to, to satisfy the conditions of running that home-based business versus taking your clothes that don't fit anymore and setting up a garage sale on a weekend. That this seems to be more of a business where customers, customers are coming onto his property to, to pick up their goods. And, you know, without having the exact verbiage of a home extended occupation from the ordinance, it sounds like we're approaching that, you're getting into the business part of thing where you're having more than the average number of, you know, it's, it's more than a, a home-based occupation where, where a permit would be to your, to your, to your benefit and to the state's.
I don't disagree with you. So I guess I'll, I guess I'll go with that route. I wonder what kind of precedent that is setting for all of the other people who do what I do? Will the city start requiring everybody who does what I do to get IUPs? If, if not, doesn't that seem to be an inadequate application of the rules?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rayner.
I guess, to Mr. Elphell, the difference I see, and the reason for an IUP, is you're running a business. You have a corporation or a limited liability, whatever you are, but you're a business. You have an online business, you operate as a business. You don't, somebody having a couple garage sales a year is not a business per se. It's them selling their old clothes and some furniture. And I agree that by having an IUP, it, it does protect you. It's probably more work than you want to do, but in the long run, it's, it would protect you.
I appreciate you, your feedback and listening to me. And I guess I'll find out how to go about the IUP, apply for that.
It will involve, obviously, some money.
Right, I'm aware of that. I mean, that's why I didn't do it when Harvey said I could use his land over here to do live auctions outside. Because you, you refer to what I do as a business, but it's really hobby. I mean, the amount of money that's generated by what I do is, is so small that the amount of money that it would have cost to get the application process going for the live outdoor auctions was probably more than I would make the whole season of doing the auction. So, so that's why I didn't do that. But now that I've purchased this property, I'm invested in that. And I'll do whatever I need to do to protect my ability to...
I think the distinction here too is, if this property's in a commercial district, you're now out in a residential. And that's where the interim use permit factors in, is you're, you're doing something, you're, you've got a home-based business in a residential area. And so it, it does set conditions by which you agree, this is how you're going to run your business, and then the neighbors all get to, to understand that, and the city council gets to define those. As long as you stay within that, as everybody said here tonight, you get protected. If it's agreed upon, these are conditions of the business, here's the operating parameters, and you operate within that, you're fine. But it gives the, the public a chance to weigh in, saying it's, it's a business use, a commercial use.
Right.
In a residential area, so.
Okay. Well, then I would be contacting you, Mr. Stockman, for some information about that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Your next deadline would be the first Tuesday in July, so you've got a little time, but...
Deadline to do what?
To get the application in if you want to move that quickly.
Okay, can I get that from you?
Yes, I could email it to you if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And I would say, just looking at the picture here, looking at the aerial, you know, again, this isn't perfect. But the driveway going back from your house to the building may be over the property line.
Maybe what?
Over the property line.
You're kidding.
At least from the aerial here, so that'd be one of the things that will come up in, in the IUP consideration.
Okay.
So you may want to, you know, again, this is just an aerial with some lines on it. But it should be, should be noted that there is a, there'll be a requirement to make sure that your, your driveway is completely on your property and the setback is maintained, so.
Setback of?
The driveway from the property.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right. Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome.
Usability steady for old Vikings. Feasibility study for Old Viking.
Mr. Mayor. I thought you'd ask about code enforcement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, I know there wasn't much to talk about, but I intended to put Springer on my summary and it didn't get there. So, I did talk to Linda Wilbur. And she had, one of the four sisters is very ill on her deathbed. And the other one is the one causing the most problems that is resisting the sale. They had a couple offers. One was verbal and then the neighbor actually increased his offer. And so, I, she stated that he was the top bidder right now. And they served the sister, her name escapes me, but anyway, they served the resistant sister with papers now to force her to make a decision, so. I believe she has 30 days to get back to the attorney or whatever, so. That's the latest.
And, and there was some discussion that if the neighbor were to get it, he's looking to basically build a home for his son?
It sounds like he would like to keep the majority of it natural, build a home for his son and possibly dedicate some land to the city. For a park or just open space, so.
Liz? Are they aware that people are still getting back in there?
Yes.
Driving around the?
Yeah.
He's going to put up the barricades. He's, he's called on a regular basis.
Well, the berm on the driveway, they're driving around that.
Yeah.
So, they're getting around.
The neighbor that's interested in the property is the one that's been maintaining it and calling the city on a regular basis when there's.
I think he'll probably be putting up a fence pretty fast after he probably buys it or, you know, makes it so they can't get in there.
I think that's, that's his specific intention to buy it, to stop that. It's just, it's very close to his home and the shooting and the different stuff going on back there is.
There's a bonfire back there a couple weeks ago.
It's unnerving to the families.
Is there any restoration that needs to be done back there from the mining?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, there's quite an extensive amount of grading that needs to be done.
There is part of the lot that's below the street level.
Yes, and only a small portion though where there's some ponding, but it's, it's a nice piece of land even so. But yeah, it's very rough and ghillie and, yeah. There's a couple areas along the west side that are quite steep. Thank you.
Anything else, council and I here on the code enforcement? I apologize for skipping that. All right. I'll go to the feasibility study.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
The only question I have is, you know, we, we have, we have had conversations about roads and whatnot and how to assess and how to pay for them. You know, is this, again, something that we are solely looking at, you know, residents who are on Old Viking to pay the full grunt amount? Or is, or do we really, really need to look at a different means, you know, to get some of our road costs covered?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
Councilmember Rickert's comment, this is true, we've had discussions, we've never done anything. I think it's time maybe that we do direct staff to look at some options as to how we can, what an assessment policy could look like. Could it be that we levy come this coming budget that, that everyone in the city pays a portion versus having assessments to just the property owners? I think it's, to me, it's more reasonable to do a levy and everybody pay something versus the cost to assess property owners, given that we are not concentrated and, and the cost would be great. And everybody uses roads that they don't live on. So, I think that's a fairer way to do it. I tried to go back and Cory, a while back, after one of our last conversations, I believe that you sent some information out about assessments. And I tried to go back and find it and I couldn't. So, I, I was even trying to think, figure out what month that was we talked about, because we've talked about it numerous times, I'm just trying to remember it.
Yeah. I, I still haven't.
Okay. I mean, if we could, if you could send that out again, we can look at it and maybe we need to have a, a special meeting that just talks about how we want to handle this going forward. Again, as you've said, Mr. Rickert, or Councilmember Rickert, we've spoken about it numerous times and it's time to get off the diamond and do something.
Well, my opinion is if, if we truly want to do something, we got to figure a way to pay for it. And again, I don't think, and again, my opinion is the same where I don't, I think it's too difficult to assess just the properties on those particular roads.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, the same token, I don't think you're going to be able to raise the levy enough. We have 67 miles of road and if you typically last roughly 20 years. And if you do a 20-year cycle, that's a lot of money per year. And we, we'd never be able to raise a levy enough. So, I think we're going to have to come up with a combination of assessment and levy. And I think maybe a starting point, and I think this is something that with what we're loving today, I think we could almost do it if we, if we did it a 50-50 where the city pays 50% and we assess 50%. And I think a lot of residents would jump all over that, that I think we could do right now, probably two, three miles a year. And I, I think that would be really something great to happen in now, to do something like that. And that way, they have some ownership and they're paying something. Because you're going to have some people, if you don't assess anything, you know, you have people living up here in a gravel road and they're going to be paying, you know, $500, $1,000 a year to black, to blacktop somebody else's road. They're not going to be happy about that. But if there's some type of an assessment, they're, they're paying something and yes, the city should help out some too. And I think, I think right now with the levy, I think we're getting close enough where we could do that.
To Councilmember Bettinger, and, and I, I agree that we, we have to come up with something, whether it's a 50-50, 60-40, I don't know. But that's a discussion we need to sit down and, and have a serious discussion. And I'll draft a, a motion for Tuesday, directing staff to do some research, towns that are similar to us. What do they do? You know, what, what, what is their policy? How, to, to help guide us to determine, because maybe 50-50 isn't right. I don't know what, what the right number is. What would be a, you know, if we decided to do, you know, $2,000, and these are just numbers I'm picking out, but if we decided to, to assess a total of $200,000, what would that mean per household? You know, between residential and commercial? I, I think we need to have some of those figures in front of us before we are able to say, yeah, 50-50 is good, 60-40 is good, 70-30 is good. Because otherwise, we really don't know what that impact is. Because it would be different by each street, each, each project is going to be different because of the number of homeowners on it. So, I think we need to, to look, figure it out.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Question for Engineer Nelson, and if you don't know, that's fine. Since your last study, I believe, was in 2000, was updated in 2015, if I remember right, where it was estimated that to re, to overlay Old Viking was around a half a million dollars. Has, could you totally ballpark a guess as how much roughly costs have gone up or down?
Actually, I mean, this year, we're seeing some fairly low but luminous prices and probably some, you know, for strictly overlay projects where you don't have a lot of other costs. I mean, I, I think they're either flat or maybe even slightly down. I mean, cost of oil is down and just, I have a fairly good-sized project that I'm doing in Elk River and they're, we have mixed prices in the $40 per ton and back. You know, 2,000, when the, kind of during the oil crisis, when prices of gas went up, it was up in the $70 per ton. So, I mean, that's a pretty substantial difference. So, I, I would say there, there is probably holds pretty true, so.
That it's probably around the same or maybe a little less?
Probably around the same.
Okay. Because I think that's one of the challenges we've had is trying to come up with at least a, okay, what, what kind of number are we talking about when it, you know, so if we, and knowing that the budgeting's coming up, to, to have some sort of idea as to what we would be talking about for projects going forward.
They got to remember that's overlaying only, that's not.
No, I think that half million was a reclaim overlay. There's, there's a difference. Just a simple overlay would, should not be a half a million for three, three and a half. I believe it was a, a two-inch overlay with quite a bit of patching. And I'm more or less going from memory here, but, you know, there, there are some areas that are starting to alligator crack. You know, some agencies overlay right over them. The disadvantage with that is a lot of times you have reflective cracking where the, the cracks kind of come up through the surface. It's not a huge issue, but any subbase failures you want to patch before you really overlay that, that'd be my recommendation. You know, just in general on that topic also, you know, Old Viking is kind of designated as a collector road. We have a, a few in the city that could meet that, but once our population reaches 5,000, we'll be eligible for municipal state aid money. And that would be one of the roads that we could use that money on. You know, so roads like Old Viking, the salt, anything that's more, of more, more than just a residential road, it's, it's, you know, kind of has residential roads feeding into it. So, that's something to keep in mind when you're planning on moving forward. I don't know, at the rate of we were going, I don't, it's going to, it's still going to take quite a few years probably to get to that 5,000 population though. And so, what do you do in the meantime? And that's really the, the tough question. In, in general, I'm a pretty big proponent of overlaying roads and, you know, trying to make that, that road last longer before you have to do the expensive repair of reconstruction.
Well, obviously, some of the discussion at Road and Bridge was to also put some effort into maintaining roads so they don't get to the impaired condition and do some preventative work as well. I'd say I'm going to use those funds, it's just going to wait till all the roads get to a certain level of deterioration and then put the overlay on or reclaim an overlay or do some preventive maintenance along the ways. Really does require a plan. In addition to funding, it requires how you're going to spend those funds, years, years coming, coming up here, so.
They'll all get to an, an overlay or reclaim overlay at some point. There's no way to stop them then.
I just read an article in a small town in Wisconsin, I thought I'd put it in here and I didn't, where they're just going back to dirt, going back to gravel roads. If the roads are so too bad, they're just, like we did up on Hedgehog, just went back to gravel.
Yeah, at some point, it does become more cost-effective to just turn it back to gravel roads.
For those listening on YouTube, that is not a plan at this point. It's not being suggested or recommended.
No, it is not. Saying that is something.
A town in Wisconsin did that.
Toned it, yeah.
Actually, the people on Hedgehog, since that one's turned back to gravel, have stopped complaining, they're actually happier now with the gravel than they were with the blacktop.
Yeah, I think it's held up better. That, that road was in bad shape, the blacktop. And the limited use and being a dead end, it's not as bad as some.
As far as having staff collect information from other cities, you're going to find out, I'm sure Shane knows this, they're all over the place. So, every city has their own. I mean, now they're just going to have to decide what works for us. And it doesn't have to be set in stone. We can start here. If it doesn't work, you change it, you know? But we need a starting place and we need to get moving forward, I think. We can't, we, we keep talking about it and we're not doing nothing. We need to, we need to do something.
Well, you know, for that, then you can, you could easily take the numbers that we've seen on Old Viking, figure out how many residents it would affect, how many households, and then come up with, you know, a guess and then, okay, where do we want to? What, what do we think is reasonable? And, and then obviously, based on, okay, if we take a certain percentage of funds that we levy for, what's that do, you know, overall? You know, kind of just play with some different numbers and see what makes the most sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
And to Shane's memo, the last bullet point, we have to decide too, whether we would just assess direct parcels or indirect. Because that makes a difference to the number. And I don't, you know, I don't know how you decide to do that. And I don't know, do we, do we go footed, square, linear footage? Or do you do the number of properties? And I think that, maybe my motion will be is that I call for a special meeting that we sit down and that's our only topic. And, and what are our thoughts? And, and then once we have those thoughts on paper, we can go forward with putting together a policy. If, if we feel it's too much work for staff to look at other cities, then, then council will have to sit down and do it. So, maybe my motion will be that we have a special meeting to talk about assessments for roads going forward and everybody bring their thoughts. If they have any type of documentation that they have that, you know, they, that they have that they think would be beneficial, share that ahead of time. And we can sit down and have a discussion that is just on the one topic.
Wouldn't it be better to have him do, spend the 2,000, have a feasibility study done, have it done with a 50-50 cost split, only directly access on, onto the Old Viking Boulevard and move forward in that direction. And if we have that report, then we have some numbers to look at to say, yeah, we can do this, or no, we can't. And then, you know, we may, maybe, maybe we wind up having, to have a second feasibility done, maybe the first one will work, I don't know. But if we have one done and we take, we can take a look at them numbers and see how that all works out, then maybe we'll say, hey, that looks good, we can make that work. So, I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather proceed in that direction and then we have a more definite idea of what we're talking about.
Mr. Nelson.
Oh, if you just kind of take it on to that thought, I, I've been in this position with more than one city or town, you know, where, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big question. We haven't done much for maintenance or, or road projects in the last 10 or, or years or, and sometimes what helps is, you know, we've already kind of looked on a, kind of a, a citywide basis at some of your roadway needs. And we've estimated cost based on a, a cost per foot. So, those aren't project-specific cost estimates, but they're fairly close estimates. And it's, it's fairly easy to, you know, now with GIS, to generate a map that shows how many. how many properties are on a specific project or a specific road. And so, with that information, what we've done in other communities, and I would agree with Randy that having something, if, if Old Viking is, is the road that you're considering will be your, your first project or your, your next project, I, I agree that it has, it's useful to have the real information. In addition to that, to help you kind of craft your greater policy or your larger policy, you could look at a couple other project types. So, you know, Old Viking, it's, it's kind of a collector road, it's just an overlay. You might also want to take a general look at a, a reconstruction project, you know, Ebony and Garnett. If we applied the fifty fifty cost share there, what would that result in a, you know, for an assessment? And if you had two or three different project types, really, that, that's what helps you decide is, you know, based on this cost share, and it's usually for residential property, it's usually a per unit basis, you know, this is what the resulting assessment would be, and this is how much the city portion would be, and from there, it's.
What do you say, per unit, per pin?
Per, it's usually per buildable property. So, if you have a, a pin, that's, maybe it's too small, or it's, it's a, there's a separate tax ID, but it's not buildable, it's all wetland, that would not receive an assessment.
One of the, one of the debates that came up in Roden Bridge was from a deterioration standpoint, our rating, I think they, they equated Old Viking and Rogers Lake area equivalent, they chose Old Viking because it has more visibility and more traffic potentially, other than homeowners. But they, maybe rebuild, maybe comparing something like Rogers Lake to Old Viking, and rebuild like Ebony and Garnett would make some sense, because we got to know what our total numbers are and then what a long range plan is. And, and the impact of, if we can only assess, if we're limited by the valuation impact on the homes, that, that would affect that as well. Fifty fifty may not do it, it may not be able to assess that much. And certainly, we'd have to know that, you know, if you're, if you're talking, if we could do fifty fifty, and you're talking a quarter million dollars for the residents on the road, a quarter million dollars for the city, we'd have to determine how do we get that money, because raising the levy by a quarter million dollars would probably be more excitement than any of us would want to. Sure wouldn't hold the residents. And again, for those listening on YouTube, we are not saying we're doing that, we're discussing options, and, and we'll present that. Before we spend any city money, there will be public discussion on it, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
And I'd say to those listeners on YouTube, if you have any ideas, let us know what would be palatable to the residents.
Yeah, if you inherited a, a luminous plant, and you need to get rid of some of that stuff, we don't want to go. All right, so what else we have to discuss tonight, and we have to craft up something for a motion for Tuesday. Any other input on that?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to question, do you think you need Shane for the council meeting for this specific discussion? I think he has a previous engagement, but we want him to be here for the stormwater, but if he doesn't need to be here for this discussion?
No, I, I think that, depending on who's gonna make a motion, I, I think that the motion itself will take care of it. It's, it's gonna be more informational than final decision type, so.
Okay.
He's excited us tonight, should get out of here. All right. Consent agenda. Questions on the minutes? And answer reports?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question on the finance report, what happened with the, what's up with the water in the well? Something, the testing?
Yeah, unfortunately, whenever we turn on the, the park water and stuff, the state has to come out and test any water that's for public use, and for some reason, it, it didn't pass a couple of times, and I think the, the state said, well, the tickets to your pump, it's not primed enough, we have to have more well come out, prime it or look at it, and they said, it'll be just fine. So, unfortunately, we had to pay for them to come out. I don't remember, I think they sanitized the well again, too, so took a couple times for it to get passed.
So, there were signs put up, like on the sinks, at least in the, at the pavilion?
No, they just shut them down, shut them down until they get the bleach through and then run it.
Okay, so there's, there are signs stuck up above the sink, those should just be taken down now?
Oh, there still is?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I noticed that last night, yeah.
Okay, yeah, they probably just, they took it, took it down.
Okay, no problem.
One question out of the three of three. Name number two fifty-three, the Department of Labor and Industry surcharge, what is the surcharge?
We pay it every quarter.
And what is it?
Basically, whenever we do a building permit, there's a surcharge that the state requires a surcharge, and then we pay the state.
I didn't realize that was Labor and Industry.
Yeah, what did they call it?
Oh, yeah, they would be, you know, Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry. Yep.
And then, Mr. Glazer's gonna try and be more consistent so he don't get three quarters of billing all at once.
Yes.
So, now, two of those billings were last year. We pay those all out of this year.
I'll see you more this month than I do your way.
Unfortunately, no, it is, there's nothing to do like that.
I was actually gonna, yeah, there was, Mary asked to put the cost of culvert replacement on the item here, and I, you know, again, it's, it's new information, and we certainly can, can discuss it. I was gonna bring it up under the claims history. I don't know if this is the same thing you were talking about, but evacuation, excavation cost replace Jarvis culvert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we ended up paying for the full thing, and then we just got reimbursed from the city of, of, of the half.
And was yours something different?
Correct.
Okay, so, in that, I, I quickly said we could, we could add it there, but I think it's for discussion, since none of us have any information in front of us.
Correct.
But, Mr. Mayor, did we or did we not make, or did some make a motion that we can't do that, and now we're again changing their rules, which is, I don't get it. Some can, some have to abide by the rules that were set for us and the motions that were made, but others don't?
Well, discuss it.
A motion was made that no new information could be presented unless it was approved by, if it was brought later by you or Cory. If it was not approved by you or Cory before tonight, it shouldn't be added.
Well, that was our agreement. And so, with that being said, well, we'll get to that, I guess we'll finish up with the consent agenda here. One point four, who will keep Economic Development Authority checking account open? Anybody have a problem with that? Nobody?
No.
Five, the resolutions to accept the donations from the Lions and from Center Point Energy, and connect that to the radios. And the only note I had there on the Center Point, they want to actually present the check themselves at a council meeting in July or August, she'll take care of that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've been in touch with them, she's been emailing back and forth, and we're not sure if it's gonna be July or August yet. They'll let us know once.
As long as you're on top of it, they can. Anybody got any concerns over that? I think it's a great idea to make sure all of our firefighters have radios. I appreciate the chief's initiative there and the generosity of the Lions and the Center Point matching grant. Record licenses?
Has Ramsey Lyons submitted an application yet for the thrashing job?
Yes, but unfortunately, I haven't started processing it, and I'm trying to think of the light, but yes, I do have it.
Okay, so they'll make it through next month?
Yeah.
We have a, a request to close the city offices on July third with some coverage for the parks. I think in being a busy weekend, it does make sense to have somebody doing something in the parks throughout the weekend, the trash does build up. We had some discussion in the past, we had Don Morden do this for us. I don't know if he's interested, available, or if the council's interested in that. Councilmember Rainville's request here to give a, a long weekend, I think it's a good idea, we just have to take care of our parks in the process here. I would guess that'd be a lot of usage. Comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just, I just thought would be an opportunity, give them a long weekend, we have a small staff, and both the office personnel can't be gone at the same time, so this gives both of them the ability to have a longer weekend. However, we would have to, maintenance will have to determine one person to come in Monday morning, as they would i- if we were open, to pull the, the garbage out of the parks Monday morning, and then they would take care of them again on Wednesday. So, it'd be a limited amount of time that they'd have to come in, and then just let Joe in conversation with Eric and or Don, just let, let them decide between them who would want to come in for a couple hours. And I would, I'll also, if, if it is agreed upon by staff and council, I'll also see that it's posted on the Northern Facebook, so there's a lot of residents on that, so.
Comments? Council okay with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
Assuming there have been situations like this in the past where there's been that one middle day holiday, and done this before?
We, we, in the past, we, we've had somebody work weekends because the, the parks do get heavily used. I'm not certain how well it, it worked.
Christmas time, we.
We did, yes.
Something like that, Christmas.
Yeah, that was the same thing, it was the holiday was the.
Tuesday here.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
It's a little different, because this is Fourth of July, and, and parks, Christmas time, you're not using the parks in the same way. So, I think that's the issue, is how do we make sure that the parks just aren't trashed?
Right, and we would have had cases where a holiday like that would have fallen on like a Friday or Monday, where we would have been bothered.
Yeah, specific weekends that we know are gonna be extremely busy.
So, we, we'd ask Joe to investigate who, who could come in. All right, anything else on that? Okay, we have RCA for dirt, need to finish that at, it is in need of, hockey boards are down, it looks like that probably needs to be leveled again, too. So, what's remaining out here needs to be finished.
Well, we don't want to touch where the boards are until we determine the permanent location, because that's level for the skating surface.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying that, just what they, anything they messed up when they were taking the boards down, but this is the part where the model is taken out that needs to be leveled out. Any other questions on that?
Nope.
And a request for assistance from Mr. Colefall. Present a plan. Any comments on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
Guess if he's offering it at no charge?
It's not, it's, there's certainly worth seeing what's in there, too, so we can use it going forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Benjers.
We've had a capital improvement plan, when we became a city, we had capital improvement plan for all our roads and, and equipment, everything, and it just hasn't been kept, everything hasn't been kept up to date. So, there's, there is one there, and I disagree with that, it needs to go more than five years. Roads, you might be able to go five years, but when you buy a fire truck, you know it's gonna last you twenty years, the day that you get that fire truck, you take the cost of that fire truck, you divide it, if you're gonna keep it twenty years, you divide it by that cost by twenty, start putting that much money each year in the fund. It's pretty, it's really pretty simple to put together. But, I mean, you can't go just five years, you can't wait till five years before your fire truck needs to be replaced, oh, shoot, in, in five years, we need three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just, it ain't gonna work, you'd, you'd be up and down.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Uh, Councilmember Bettenger, I just went by with what our CPA told us when he gave us the presentation on the, on our financial picture. We can negotiate how long it is for, I'm just, I took what he said at the meeting, and, but it, it, it's our decision how far out it goes. He did say that twenty years is too far, but that's something that's negotiable.
Well, you know, again, there's a jumping off point here, if he's willing to do it at no charge in the city, and it doesn't incur extra charges, as long as we do it during normal operating time, and, and council members are willing to participate at no charge, we could at least start with a five year plan. I agree, when we set up the plan before, five years isn't enough to do major capital. If you've got a, if you've got a plan for, you know, six figure, seven figure items, you're not gonna do that in five years. But it gives us a starting, starting point anyway, to update what we have and, and look at our budgeting processes coming up, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rick.
And, and I agree, obviously, if, if he's willing to do something at no charge, yeah, take advantage. Again, I do think it's worthwhile, though, to ask him, you know, you know, we, for those bigger ticket items, five years is enough, we need to do something more realistic, so that we do have some more valuable numbers, rather than just arbitrarily picking everything at five years and then trying to go back from there.
Well, I just start throwing roads in there, it's gonna, yeah, piece of equipment or two, and, and, yeah. All right, so at this point, it's, it's something to start with?
Mr. Mayor, just so you guys are aware, excuse me, when we do schedule this, Mr. Colefall, it has bad nighttime drainage, so.
Yeah, I would say during the day, because we don't want it to be for you to turn the day to without an extra hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if we do something over the noon hour, it works well for me. All right? We actually have another request for council action that Cory did contact me, and we agreed could be put in here, and that was for the, Lord being out of town next week, and Cory having an emergency situation come up, we need to cover the office, and Liz has agreed to office, out of our office during that time period, and is Ellen.
Yes, and, Mr. Mayor, we're making arrangements right now that it might be changed a little bit. or he might be going in on Monday instead, so we're waiting for the doctor.
Is coming Monday?
Yes, so Lori may be in the meeting, and then hopefully it's a short meeting so then she can meet with her doctor then, or hit up her roommate and go back.
So just a side note, keep it short.
Yeah.
So she'll be tapping, you'll hear it on the...
She grabs a gavel, you know we're in trouble.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if we should make an exception and then vote on this at this time because if indeed it is Monday...
Well, Lori will be in the office on Monday.
Right, okay.
No, it's not necessary if it's Monday.
That's true, Ellen won't be in yet, okay, all right.
It's Wednesday then.
Wednesday, all right, all right.
You have to be out at the same time.
I just didn't want to do something to my forehead, thank you, sorry.
So, councilors okay with that? All right, and then we have open sealed bids.
Mr. Mayor, you have a bid sheet of everybody that we actually submitted the bids to. So you can see what we settled on. So structural is on top, so we'll start with them. On the other note, structural did not attend the pre-thon meeting. Whether or not you want to take that as a factor is great for me or not. And they only did the one bid, and that was bid one, and that's to construct a 44, a 45 by 44 addition to the Northern Recycling Center for $74,829. So they did not provide us with the other two bids that we were asking for. And broad view builders, they were short, short view.
Did they attend the meeting?
Yes, they did. Okay, so they have a couple different things here. On bid number one, they have a square cut big for 100 and, and it must be, I'm thinking that's what it is, or no, it's footing.
A square foot?
Footing.
Footings?
I put big, that's $129,935. Now they also have a second option of a core drill footing, and that's for $137,556. Now for the bid number two, they've got $17,900. And then for bid number three, they have for a square cut footing, $145,410 for a core drill footing of $153,031. And, Mr. Mayor, I can make copies of all this and have it available for you guys. I'll scan it and email it tomorrow, and then I'll have copies for you in your boxes.
Puts last year in perspective. We're operating off the same planes as last year.
Correct.
Okay, schedule budget meetings. Let's start with you Cory.
I left my phone outside. I can run and grab it. The things I had in there, you might want to take note, but Mary should know, is there's several different meetings for the Lions in the next two months and the Heritage. So it looks like Wednesdays are the better of the days. I don't like Wednesdays. You don't like Wednesdays? I can run and go grab my car, I don't think I had anything scheduled though. I mean, all you guys are keeping to it.
So which day was best for you Paul? Which day on the week typically?
Mondays probably. Mondays or Thursdays, but...
I'll make whatever works.
Mary?
I, I can make whatever work. Now we do have, there's two Lions meetings. And then it depends on what time we decide to do it too.
Here's a question, is there room in the conference room if the ZIO stuff is gone?
Did the ZIO come off?
Well, again, it's got to be an open meeting, ZIO stuff is not gone yet.
Right.
It's got to be an open meeting. There's, there's other options for the Lions, I mean, we have the room downstairs. Lions and Heritage, the problem is, varies on both of those. That's the bigger issue, they can meet somewhere else, we get priority of the room, I think.
Yeah, yes we do, we don't charge ourselves, but we can...
So are you looking at June, and I'm assuming in the evening?
Yeah. June's escaping quickly.
Yeah, then definitely Mondays are best for me. So the rest, well I got baseball on Mondays too, but...
So, I think the 12th is out. 19th and 26th, we're talking Mondays?
I can do the 19th, the 26th, I'm taking advantage of the Ramsey Lions paying for the 55 and older driver.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
In the evening?
Yep, starts at...
That's, there's one on the 19th?
No, it's on the 26th.
It's on the 29th, I think, yeah.
There's another night too, yeah, there's two nights of it.
At Ramsey City Hall?
Oh, I don't remember where it's at.
It's an eight-hour one or a four?
I think it's, they're two four-hours, because they're evening.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got another one too, but it's just...
It's 55 and over, can't stay up that late.
I just...
I've never, I've...
I get your chair, it's going to...
Why, and I should have done it at 55 because I had seven years under my belt of lower rates, I don't know.
And Ramsey Lions will pay for that.
Right.
And in Northern Rhythm?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So are we looking at the 19th then?
19th?
What time?
Got to be 7 o'clock, right?
7:00 PM?
And would you like me to do like we have in the past and invite different groups to different days?
Do we want to do the first one, can't do an overview and then invite them in the days?
Well, I guess it depends on how many you want to have. Because I'm still compiling the data from them at this time. The fire department has theirs and I haven't even given Joe his...
We don't, we don't get our year-to-date stuff, you don't do that until typically July, do you?
Well, and it's not even worth giving you year-to-date because within two weeks it changes because we pay bills or we get extra money. We do deposits once a week, so that changes weekly. And then we do bills, not only is it just standard bills that we do once a month, but every two weeks we have payroll. So there's always, every week there's a change.
Typically though, you give us a kind of a mid-year report.
Yeah, a full report, but like I said, you just can't stick with that because it changes every week. But, yeah, I'll still be giving you a standard report and then I'll be giving you... The way I compiled it this year, when I talked with you about it, because we had a change of our funds and stuff, it took me a while to convert it all to the old version and combine the new because then we transferred like, things like utilities and stuff where it was all separated, and then we would put it all together in one, so I had to go back all the other years and put it all together, and then my numbers were all off. So I had to go through that for a while, but then I was able to figure it out. So now it's comparing exactly the same from 2014, so. And then because of that, it's a longer sheet, so now it's an eight and a half by 14 budget sheet. But as we're ready to get closer to approving it, we can eliminate the 14 and then we can get the process again. So again, I didn't know if you wanted me to bring in people or not. And we also had talked to, one of the things that are coming up that I let Jeff know about is our assessment contract is up this year. We, me and Liz has already met with the company assessor, and there is an independent assessor that came and we spoke and talked with them in great length, different options, but we would like for, to introduce them to you guys. We were, had a little reservations of the independent because they were taking on so many cities and actually they had, what was it, they put their bid out to, I don't remember how many cities. There was quite a few, and there was only going to be two of them doing it. So there was a lot of concern about, they had to do 20%, but they actually had to physically go to the houses. And if they had five, six cities, could too physically do that. That was a concern that we had after speaking with them, so. But they were cheaper, but it wasn't, it was, what was it, like 4,000?
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah, so. And then plus with the company, you have all the other amenities that they can use and stuff there, so.
So at the first meeting, what would you intend to cover?
Well, generally, we, hopefully we should be able to get the proposed budget prior to that to you. That's if I get a chance for Matt. Joe is usually very quick about getting me his proposed, so if anything, I would say in the first meeting, have Joe here, and then that way you can at least start with a part of it. If Matt has done with this section, then I would say, let's move on to maybe both of them. But sometimes it's almost too much to have those two. The general fund's going to be the biggest one, it's going to be the biggest for you guys. So I don't know if you wanted to just start on the general first or not.
I'd prefer to do the smaller ones first, get them done, and just in case we run into great difficulties or, you know, with the general, we're not pushing the other ones out.
Right, and with the recycling one, and I mean, pretty standard, we budget what we're expecting to get in our score funds. So there's really not much to really do with that one. It's the general and the others.
Yeah, I think if the, if Matt was ready with the fire one, that would be a good one to start with.
Okay.
And I think, talking with him, had different meetings after last year, he, it sounds like he'll be ready. He understands that different cities operate different ways. All right, any other discussion on that? So right now we've got a June 19th, 2017, 7:00 PM. And if possible, start with fire department.
Mr. Mayor, do we want to go forward and put them on the calendars? Summer, people's summer calendars get very busy.
Well, I think the third is out. Can I look at, again, 17th of July? Keeping it on Mondays, a month later? Is that acceptable right now?
Mm-hmm.
17th of July, Monday. No?
Well, I'm, yeah, if it's at 7:00, I can, I gotta be in Wisconsin for an appointment, but that's at 2:30, and I should be back by 7:00.
So we should target, what are you thinking, about two hours maximum?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, another change that I was putting on there is, we kind of, I had to do a little bit more research, but with the South Street, obviously we have two budgets and money to cover our losses on that. And then when Mr. Bryan was talking about having an item, a line item too for money set aside for kind of emergency services, repairs, and stuff like that, and I did talk to Mr. Colfer about that, and we could essentially create a fund, a capital fund, that's just a blanket capital fund that we can transfer money to every year and then just build on it, and then that way when a roof needs repair or whatever, we can utilize that money. So, and that way it's a little cleaner than cleaning from previous years.
Yep. And when I go out into August, we're going to talk about the 14th maybe? Monday, the 14th?
And, and, we'll take care of that, Paul. And I think that the July one also had that, we'll take care of that, won't we?
The 14th?
Yep. All right, that'd be good for now. We'll see how we can progress and make it through these now. And I apologize for saying we're going to go with the culvert discussion, but we'll abide by what we agreed on, and that's what I have for tonight's meeting. So, I would move to adjourn. Meeting adjourned, 9:30.